My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we move in silence for nine one one. Thank you.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Zupan.
I'll accept the motion to go into executive session.
So.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd. Yes. Trustee Zupan.
Motion is carried.
Oh, no.
Why?
Who committed this?
What are you doing before these things?
You got your attention.
This is stupid. It's a waste of our time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I could stay on my TV.
It's this restaurant. It's accelerating who's sitting here. It's complex.
I think when I get in the audience, she gets ugly. And I come back.
We did this.
Oh, no, I'm gonna sit here for an hour and wait for them to come out. So I tried to call this long service and ask her name again, but when I called him, it looks like this road. He said, "When I talk to you, you're right here."
Are you talking on Spanish, Travis?
Yes.
I would love to learn this from you.
Is it Castro?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Because my yard is not going to be about six.
The grass is so tall, it covers the bottom.
But they got a big grass. They got a grass, right? A grass. I don't get it. Yeah, but the village got this big money to have the grass, but that's what they did.
Yeah, my apartment doesn't make it except for, I don't know.
Yeah, but still, even the vacant ones aren't wrong.
I know. I can't, I can't get the point you, the point you, uh, can't.
Again, what happened, the guy that was, he's, I think, myself, I think he had, because he came and talked to him. Probably. Maybe I'll be there. So now.
How you doing, young baby?
Same drunk, same guy. Not the same guys, but.
Well, young guys, no, but there was no, I guess that's not practical, but there was no young motherfucker, so I didn't know.
See, originally, when I started, I was yours. And I had, like, a long time, this guy, this guy, this guy, this guy, this guy.
Well, the only issue gonna be is that I can't keep up with the dogs, so. So hopefully, I need an issue there, but I can't.
I can't. I can't get it. But anyway, but, uh, you can get the phone.
Yes. So I tried calling, because he said it wouldn't be a thing for two or six, three or seven, so I called inside of what his, his mess system was before. It couldn't even last. So I'll try tomorrow. I hate calling.
Come on Monday if I don't like the coffee on Monday.
If he says he comes after the dog on Monday, because he's gonna need a team getting on my bad character later. Call on them too. Because I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody to just be like, "Oh, he opened it, that dog will get out, I don't want him to come back." He has a bite of his own. I mean, he's, he's missing me, right? But, but.
All those guys, I don't think, I don't think though, he's known that.
Oh, no, the key was stuck out, and I mean, I just wanted to make sure the gate is padlocked, because if he gets out, then he starts to roar. God knows where it'll be. Because he just thinks he should go everywhere, you know? I can't even, I can't even get him to come in the house when they let him out. So what I do, I just let him out.
And I thought, I thought you were gonna watch him do it, like, you're a bird.
Yes.
Because otherwise, he just, he looks, you know. He's got the household business. And out here.
But I'm just gonna, just hold him on. Just squeeze the bell to call him, and I'm done with that. Then call, let him close the door when he's ready.
Yeah, these guys are pretty nice, like, I got to find somebody's dog.
I have working, I'm working, I'm gonna get him something to work. This is one of the two jobs you go to the house every time, you know? My brother, he had a couple of times. And I'm trying to come along with my parents. That's not right. My wife is not the responsible, you know? He doesn't make it. It went good, and my issue was.
I'm working tomorrow.
That's a pretty word, "work." Keep yourself busy.
Herb's keeping me up.
Here's to you. It says, "The pouch is going."
Really?
I'm gonna take the motion to reconvene. It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Here.
Yes.
I have the four approval minutes. I'll attend the motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Mayor, I move with three corrections. The first correction would be at the bottom of page one. When we reconvene from executive session, I believe we reconvene at seven fourteen, not at seven forty-six. The second correction would be on page six, in relation to new business. Item A, accounts payable, the roll call for the vote. For the eyes. Trustee Jones should be replaced with trustee Grant. The third amendment for trustee Zupan, it says trustee Zupan stated that she was unknowing of who or what was going on. Please add to the end of that statement relative to new business coming into the village. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes with those three corrections.
It was moved by trustee Zupan and seconded by trustee Tate that the minutes be accepted with the necessary corrections that were read. Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll attend the motion to approve the general proceedings of the minutes of the regular board meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes with two amendments. The first one on page two, under the clerk's report, the fifth, no, second from last bullet point. Uh, the last sentence under the bullet points saying electronic emails have been used quite a bit. That last sentence says electronic emails are also linked to the official Facebook page. There's a semicolon and the words "and she," I would ask that the words "and she" be removed from that line. The other change is on page three. I would ask that we add the community development report to that page. "That particular evening, Ms. Jazinski reported on night court from February seventh with a hundred and thirty tickets being issued, seventeen guilty's." Okay, I'll, I'll give the clerk the information to add to the, to the minutes to be approved with, with the approval of said minutes. So I would make a motion, get these be approved with those two corrections.
Mr. Hardy welcomed you back. He welcomed you back, don't you worry, stay back after being away for a while.
Right.
So during his public presentation, he welcomed.
We can't hear back here.
Um.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Hardy, during public participation, at the conclusion of his comments, he welcomed you back. You had been gone for a while, so he was happy to see you.
Any other? Okay, this is a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Todd, that the minutes read be accepted with the necessary correction. Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
No.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the special board meeting of February twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Last item. I'll accept the motion for the approval of the committee meeting minutes for February twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
So.
Second.
Removed by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I would like to ask the board to make a motion to amend, to suspend the rules and amend the, um, agenda for the purpose of opening bids for the tower, the, um, expansion tower, um, project that we have underway. I'll, I'll ask the board to make a motion to suspend the rules to add to the agenda.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Motion is carried. We do that, during the mayor's report, and, um, right now, we're gonna go into public comment. All questions. All questions, this, this might come down. All question comments be directed to the mayor. Speaker may comment on the matter of any matter pertaining to the business on the election. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter rebuttal, or reply. Counter reply. Please state your name.
Kathy Betcher. Two-fold here. I had to call the police department for a pit bull, right? And the, I was called back and told that they could not respond because there was shorthanded. So I was listening to the scanner, and I was kind of upset that they weren't coming to get the dog. But then I found out that there were, they had responded to a shots fight. The thing is, we get mad at the police department, and we're constantly putting them down. We know we do not get enough police, that's true, but when they get there, and they get no cooperation, and, and nobody wants to give them information and help them find out who the thugs are that are out there shooting and killing, we have no right to get mad at the police department for not being able to respond for any minor thing like a dog, which at that point was a minor thing, it could have turned into something more, but it wasn't. So shame on me for getting mad at them, but shame on everybody else over at that scene that would not give them cooperation that they need. We need to stick behind our police department.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Pouch. And again, we do thank our police officers for what they do, because they've had a rough week, and they are unpaid as far as I'm concerned, overworked, and need help. Period. Lots of help. My problem is, I came up to Village Hall today because I had an issue with a property that I had sold. This was sold in March. I came to meet with Mr. Wizwadi, because, um, well, let's go back further. I have all my certifications that were done at the time of the sale, but due to the fact that Chase Bank screwed around with the seller, the buyer, that we were not able to close on that property until August thirty-first. All the certs are right here, have copies, I showed them to Mr. Wizwadi today, but he refused to accept them. The form reads for the reoccupancy, can you say it? Pre-reoccupancy. It shows that it is a buyer, not a renter, that's buying that property. And all these certifications with the copy of the certification for occupancy. So Mr. Wizwadi is not accepting that. So I asked to speak to the mayor. He was called, and she said, "He's on, in a meeting, this was at five minutes after four, but if you'd mind waiting, I'll come out and speak with you." I waited for fifty-five minutes, when Mr. Wizwadi came back and said, "No, this isn't gonna be whatever." And because he's claiming that this is a renter living in the house that the guy bought, he's not going to accept these certifications, and wants me to have all these recertifications done. That to me is unacceptable. It was done once, paid for once, all these people that have been certified, here's the copies, back in March. And now he feels fit not to accept them. Mr. Mayor, I feel that's unacceptable, and if you're going to allow him to do that to me as an old resident here, I feel sorry for anybody coming in here and buying property and what they're gonna be facing. And also, I'd like to ask, did you find out about the fire hydrants? How many fire hydrants are we down? Also, I was able to attend the safety meeting with Miss Zupan last week. One minute. And I appreciate what she's working on, and I appreciate the fact that the chief is working on these dogs that we need to get licensed and get them off the street. However, these owners need to be held accountable, however, we need to do it. That's all.
In regards to your, at, question about, was that a meeting? I was in a meeting up until five-thirty. So I'm, I don't know who gave you that information that you'd be willing to wait. I, I'm not sure, but I will personally look into what it is you're talking about, and if it's viable information that you say, then, yes, we will, we will take care of that.
Okay, I waited till after five o'clock, and you didn't.
Okay, I, I, maybe, as I stated, ma'am, I mean, I can go back and forth, but I stated that the meeting that I had was known as a five-thirty. So what I'm saying is, I will look at what paperwork you had. If it's in compliance with what we're talking about, fine. If it's not, ma'am, then I'm like, I don't know what you want me to do. So I will look at the, the work or paperwork that you, that you said you submitted. I will look it up and find out if it's been done in a properly, in a timely manner. And if it's, after a certain time, it's not our fault if it's not filed, it has to be refilled. So I have to look at all the facts, ma'am. I can't sit here and judge and tell you what it is without knowing all the facts.
Linda Washington, first of all, I want to say to the trustees, no one should be going to your mailbox, taking your mail out. If a resident comes up here and wants to share something with the trustees, and they ask the clerks up front to put it in your mailbox, it should be placed in your mailbox. I came up here and I asked them for something to be put in you guys' mailboxes, and none of you all received it. I was told that someone went in your mailboxes and took the mail that I came up here and brought for you out. That is very serious. You're an elected official, and you were elected by the residents to take care of the residents' concerns and issues that they have. So you need to talk to, love you to talk to, and let them know, it is not acceptable to remove anything out of your mailbox that was put in there, that was put in there without your permission. Also, second of all, I am here to talk about the ordinance again with, um, cyberbullying and being on social media by your staff. I'm Mayor Burgess, I've been here several times to talk about it. Today, I had some information that was given to me that I printed out. Joe Wizwazi is still writing on Facebook along with others. I gave you all documentation. I have pages of stuff that's on that Little Renee Murphy page. I have stacks and stacks of it, I pass it out in South Village, outside Village. I emailed it to people to their desk to show just how stupid and ignorant people that work around you are. And I want to say to you, um, Mayor Burgess, in all fairness, you made a statement last week that you can't stop people from doing stuff, and I've talked to you before, one-on-one, about the, uh, Facebook attacks, and you have told me personally that you can't stop it, you have asked people around you to stop, and they will not stop. So I would give you credit for saying that you have mentioned it to them, but I want to let you and the board know that whatever has to be done next will happen, it will go to that level. And I also want to just make all of us cognizant of one thing, of the times that we're living in, people just driving on the expressway in Chicago, just minding their own business, their cars get shot, people get threatened, people get killed, these kind of things that people write, it doesn't bother me if they're writing about me, because I'm thick-skinned, and you're not gonna stop nothing that I want to do. So writing all this about me and making up stuff about my book, I'm still somebody's mother, I'm still somebody's grandmother, I still preach, I'm still a motivator, motivational speaker, and you all trying to destroy my character, none of it is gonna work, because I'm gonna keep on doing everything that I'm doing. But there are people whose lives have literally been destroyed, politically and personally. And I will keep coming back here and spreading the might on all this stuff that your staff and your family members are allegedly writing on Facebook, and don't have to worry about it again. I've printed all of it, and I pass it out everywhere all over this village, from the pastors to the businesses, to show them what kind of people we have in leadership, and that we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to that sit up here playing on Facebook all day with your nasty self.
Excuse me, now, excuse me, before you go in further. I have no problem with people coming up to the front, expressing their concern, that's what it's for. It's for you to express whatever it is that you feel that's on your mind and said, village business. But the problem I do have is name-calling and threatening gestures. That is so wrong, to call a person out. I'm not saying this for rebuttal, please, sit down. I'm not saying this for rebuttal. You had your time to say what you had to say. I'm going to have my time to say what I have to say about what you commented. But to come up here each and every week and call people's names out in public, to make those type of comments, to bring people's family in there, out here at this podium each and every week, it's just ridiculous. Can I stop it? I cannot, just like I can't stop you from saying what you just said.
And you can't stop them.
It's just ridiculous, but I will ask you to leave if you keep going back and forth.
You can ask me to leave.
I will do that. But to keep going back and forth and doing this, I mean, it could be, it's a personal thing, fine, that's what it is. Everyone here that's, that's, that's an elected official knows that when you enter this arena, that could happen. People that work for the village should not have to deal with those type of, but it happens. That's called, you know, that, that's part of the job, they know they're going. I respect it, you, Mrs. Washington. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure you respect me.
I can leave.
I'm, then leave, then please leave. Thank you so much. Thank you. But to do this each and every week, to defend and talk about and, and, and talk down on someone, is not, is not, I have, I, I have, I, I don't.
And I'm a resident, everyone's.
Ma'am, please go, please go, thank you. But to continue to do this each and every week does not make sense. And I'm hoping that we, our broad people here, that we will retaliate, respect one another. But I'm gonna respect you, I'm not gonna say, I'm not.
It's not here.
I'm gonna respect you. So I'm just saying that to people that come up and say whatever they have to say. So, yes, ma'am.
Judy Kastner. And to add to what Linda said, you said you can't control what somebody says on social media. I disagree with you. There is an ordinance about any of you putting anything on social media, to the extent that it was put on there, and you have the right to fire that person for doing that, so you do have control over that. Now, to get down to my things, a while back, the subject of operational funds was brought up. We questioned it. It might be known out of the work field, but it is not known with municipalities. It was going to be checked by our attorneys as of today. You haven't told us anything about what the attorneys had to say about that, and it's been quite some time. Also, Kasperic was doing an audit, and, um, they needed more material in order to complete the audit. A lot of material. You put the audit on hold until that material was gathered. Well, as of now, that audit still isn't complete. When is it going to be complete? Now to go into why I'm really here. And this is for the board, mainly two members of the board, but all in general. Supposedly, we have a couple of professional and well-educated people. Well, I think they've slept through some of the classes. When you have a finance director that has been fired, and he's been accused of, of scounding with money, why wouldn't you ask for an audit, even if he wasn't accused? An audit should have been put in place immediately to cover our backs, and it wasn't done. Where did you go to school? It's very upsetting to the public to watch educated people turn their heads and turn their backs on what they were taught. And when you sit up there and you don't question, why are people hired without your approval? They're gonna get a salary, and not, oh, no, not just a salary, but a top salary. But you guys didn't vote on it. But that's okay with you. You know it all. But why is it being done? Why aren't you fighting to get it stopped? The second thing I want to go into is our police department, and that.
I'm exhausted.
Oh, that's all right, I can stay until next week.
In regards to the audit, it's still on hold, because we're waiting on the audit coming from the police and fire pension board, and a few things that we have to take care of. So as far as the, the final audit findings will be available by the end of this month. That's right.
My name is Terry Johns, in the Vantara Avenue where they, where they had the shootings and everything.
Sorry, what's she doing?
Terry, who?
Terry Johns.
Johns? Oh, I know. Johns, oh, I know her.
I was wondering if we can have the lights turned on, it's all dark.
What street is this on?
Van Carol, and Jeffrey, and Peterson. There's so many lights that are out, they've been out for the longest. And I was just wondering, you know, if we could get them turned on. I called Edison, but they said, you know, the village, it's up to the village, you know, the ones with the steel, they only care the wooden ones, I guess, so. Trying to sell my house and they broke in, stole my furnace and all this stuff. And he had all the, he had it checked out, you know, all the furnace before and the roof and everything, I get all the certifications done and so I don't know what's going to happen though. Anyway, I was just wondering if I could just get the lights turned on and brighten it up around there. I know the shooting that happened in the daytime, though. But it's still dark, you know, they like the darkness too, so. That's all I can say, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Johns, I just wanted to say, I did talk to the public virtual record yesterday regarding not just your areas, other areas where the lights, what happens is, they come on, and these are new lights, these are L and D lights. And if the lights don't show the proper wattage as it comes on, it'll go back off. And it'll reset itself three times. After that, it'll stay off the rest of the night. So, and that's the nature of that thing. But what I had asked is that we, until we can get that done, in order to get that done, we have to call a comment, I may have to shut down a grid so you can prepare to replace whatever has to take care of. But we're looking at trying to keep the lights on twenty-four seven until that is done.
And then all the graffiti down to seventeen.
Yeah, well, that's something that's, that's, that's not just where you're at. There's a lot of other graffiti there. That's something that we are trying to look at.
Just so bad, you know, trying to sell your house.
I'm sad that you tried to sell it, ma'am, but I understand. But no, graffiti is a problem, yes it is.
Use the mic, please.
Child at point two. I live on Carol and all this shooting been going on, on that street. I got grandkids, be outside. I was in the house Sunday when all that other shooting started. Last year, my truck got, won the shot out. My baby car got shot. After that, I put cameras up, but they're not for the police use. What they need to do, put a camera on that pole where all that stuff is happening at. Maybe they'll cut this, some of this stuff down. And the other thing I got, when the police patrol those streets, they see people sitting there, y'all, people's steps, nobody living there. Why do the police make them move? Why don't they make them get off that, off that block? They don't live there. The people doing the shooting don't live in the village. They coming from Ford Heights, Chicago Heights. They enter on Carol Avenue for some reason. Now, I let the police use my camera once for an accident that happened. But my house camera not made for the police use. But I got, right into two days, they need to put a camera on that pole right in that same block where all this stuff is happening at. For God knows, anything happened to one of my kids, my grandkids. You know, it's bad, but all the other people, they need to move these people off these vacant houses. They drive by and see these people sitting there, nobody living there. They need to make a move, get out of this, get off this block. They were all the shooting starting at. What? I'm there talking about, Ben, I'm not talking about no bull drive. I'm talking about people's lives, being taken. You can walk down the street and they get shot. Anybody who walk down the street may get shot. But if the people doing it don't live in this village and the police need to run them out of here when he see them and people sitting in vacant houses, that won't even stop. Now, I'm not putting up on the police for they see stuff. And them punks out there, talk to them police just like they talking to a child or something that they didn't got to do. They got their back on.
Mr. Porter?
Yeah.
Um, before you leave, I just wanted to tell you that yesterday, I think, I forgot exactly what's happening with, but I had a conversation with our chief for about an hour and a half and a half. And some of the things you were talking about is going to be addressed. I'm not going to, I don't like to divulge how things happen because like other people try to put out there, boy, they got two officers on staff. You call two here, there's no more than one. Do that, that doesn't make sense, I don't do that. But I'm going to tell you this, man to man, those issues that you're talking about will be addressed. Those issues that you just kept talking about, as far as the cameras and also as far as police patrolling will be addressed. They were addressed when we talked. So, it's not going on deaf ears, and you're right, that does make sense. And you absolutely right about people coming into the town. Because that's what happens in most towns when shootings happen. It's happened, people live here, people that came here, that someone lives here, brought them here. So, you have to kind of look at, it's not you, but the ones that they come to the house, you have to look at, why is that person here? So, only thing I can tell you is, yes, it has been talked about, yes, we did. And it's going to be something taken care of. I don't know how much chief is going to tell you tonight. Because I don't want, I don't like to, I like to show. I don't want to just say what I'm going to do, I just do it.
The problem I've got with these boys sitting around with these coaches, they shouldn't be there. The police see them there, chase them away. They don't live there. They live in Chicago Heights or Ford Heights somewhere. They don't live out here. They live on Peterson, get them on Peterson.
Well, I mean, it's unfortunate we cannot stop shooting, but we can, we can put things in place and let them go somewhere around.
Right, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Debbie Williams. I also attended the safety meeting on Wednesday night with trustees Zupan and Chief Koopski in their committee. And my concern was the same thing. I don't live on Carol, but if I did, I would try to get the heck off of that street. I live about three blocks away. And I can't tell you how many times I sit in my living room and we hear gunshots and I look at my husband and I say fireworks and gunshots. And we play that game, I'm tired of that game. For the last several weekends, we've had shootings. I don't know how much it goes on, I'm not home often enough to know, but I'm hearing it's almost a daily occurrence. When I got home from church on Sunday, twenty minutes after I had just got, drove down the street, fireworks and gunshots. And all of a sudden, we hear cars running down the street. I have grandchildren, there are other children on that block. I'm glad to hear that it's being addressed, but I did raise this concern with chief. It didn't just start, it's been going on for several weeks and really for several years. So, to say that we're just now looking into it, I suggest every trustee out there get a scan. And I suggest you take a few days and listen to it, just listen to it, from morning to night. And you'll hear the cries of people saying, I need a police officer. And they're told, oh, we can't get to that call right now because our police officers are tied up somewhere else. Today, a call came through, there was a person who was getting their car towed and they went to get a gun because they didn't want their car towed. And while officers were busy with that, some other lady called and said there was some kids getting ready to break into their house and it's not the first time they did it. But the last time she called the police, nothing was done about it. She said, that's okay, I'll take care of it myself. That's not the only thing I want to hear. Number one, was there school today? Because if there was school today, why were two young kids breaking into this lady's house? Number two, why does she feel like she needs to take care of it herself? Because our officers cannot be everywhere. I'm not complaining about the police department. I'm complaining about the fact there were three or four police officers short. That's what I heard. And when I hear three or four police officers short and then I hear that there's somebody that can't be taken care of because they're short, that concerns me. And it's right there in my neighborhood. What would you do if it was in yours? That's what I want to know. I want you to listen to that scan. And second of all, you lightly quoted over some bids tonight. I know I don't come to all the meetings, but whatever you're opening bids for tonight, hadn't been discussed prior to this day, what you are accepting bids for?
Yes, it has.
Okay, and what was it I couldn't hear?
For the, it's a riser for our expansion tank.
For your expansion tank?
Expansion tank.
Okay, because I couldn't hear you back there, I'm sorry. So, thank you for clearing that up, thank you.
Maria Escovedo. I'm here again to address the social media ordinance that you all were given, that you all either maybe Mayor David Hanson's right and you all don't know how to read, because obviously you didn't read it. Joe Wizwazi is still here. I'm going to keep coming until you do something about it or he's gone. Either way. Again, he was in my LinkedIn profile, I received both his email at my job. I have to keep going to HR. Now, my computer has to be searched to find out where that email came from. It's like stalking. So, you all need to do something about it, which you should have done from the beginning when you were given the ordinance. And just remember that while you all sit up here and you all want to have big heads thinking that you're better than everybody else, remember that the residents voted you in and they can vote you out. And you all will need the residents before they need you. So, you need to remember that. And again, I have my job with my credentials. I have a diploma. And I know it was said that you were trying to give me a job. I didn't need the job. Those people that you made up the jobs for needed the job. I didn't. And obviously, you didn't know my salary till I blurted it out. And it was probably because I didn't go out saying, my money, my money, my money. Well, I didn't need the job and I'm glad that I got out. Because right, and the reason I quit, one of the reasons was I had heard that there was something going on and it would be pinned on me. And that's why I quit in a meeting so that the whole audience knew that I quit. So that you wouldn't say. And right after I quit, I heard there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars missing. Where is the money? I know people have been asking about that and that we haven't heard an answer. That's all. When you're a failure, you lie. Remember, you lie, you lie, you lie.
Will you make that track back, you ladies, I hope you can back it up. I'm sorry, it's my fault. I sit in the bed and say, who's that?
You don't need to debate.
Who, who's that? Next, our ordinance is, um... Are you, are you through ma'am? Because just like the other one, just like the other one, I will ask you to leave.
You need to talk to your wife, that's perfectly.
I will ask you, without going back and forth.
You're going back and forth and your wife is going back and forth.
Mayor Porter. I have number six. First of all, the building that, uh, they're doing building right now on the northwest part of Salt Trail and just west of three ninety-four for the Lenny Gas and Wash. So, they're starting to excavate that, as you can see, right down that corner. Uh, they're trying to get it on the roof before the asphalt, uh, plants close, but we'll see what happens. But the building is, uh, and the excavating is on the way and they started, uh, yesterday. So, you'll be seeing a lot of traffic back and forth to get that particular venture started. Uh, second, the corn dog roast is a success. I'd like to thank all that help making it a success. I'd like to thank the trustees that came out, the residents that came out, that volunteered, uh, that made it a success. Uh, the people that got involved in helping cook the corn, help cook the, um, hot dogs and serve them. Uh, we had Walgreens out here, they gave out, um, some souvenirs. Tessa, which is the one that's doing the comprehensive plan, they came out also. And we're asking everyone, those that were there, their opinion on certain things, what they would like to see, all that's going to be part of the comprehensive plan. So, I'm sure, I hope we got a lot of things that were put on that board because you get a lot of things that happened right here at the village hall. So, I'm hoping that there were some of your comments and concerns that you had. You came out to the corn dog roast, you could have rolled them down, but, um, you know, it's still going to be ongoing. Also, I'd like to thank the fire, the police, I'm sorry, the fire department. And the person that made it happen, the helicopter, the helicopter that came, the first time I've ever seen one land peacefully in Salt Village. And they came out and it was a medevac from University of Chicago. They landed in the field, they left the kids sitting. They weren't given rights, um, kind of expensive to do that. Plus, the liability was kind of high for something like that. But we saw it land and take off and I thought it was an awesome experience. And I'd like to thank the person that actually went out here and did it and he's here today, Captain Dennis Sunwark. I'd like to thank you very much for making that happen. Also, the comprehensive plant, CMAP, will be here tomorrow. There's flyers at the back, but it'll be here tomorrow. Also asking for some more input. And it says, help shape the future of Salt Village. So, they're going to be here as they were here before, uh, asking questions so they can form their opinions and get everything underway and compiled to bring it back to the board, uh, and to the village. Uh, this, again, this was a grant that was awarded to us to make this happen, something that we needed and haven't had since nineteen ninety-nine. So, um, it's, it's something that will be, you can tell it was nineteen ninety-nine the last time, so hopefully it doesn't be not that long again. But it's something that needs to be updated and upgraded. Uh, seven o'clock, seven o'clock right here, right here in the village hall. And last but not least, I'd like to ask the board and the audience that's here today to be with me, and I would like to wish our clerk, Marva Campbell-Cruyff, a happy birthday. And so now, I'm going to open the bids for the, um... This is from Mitchburg Tower and Saint Magnus. The amount of the check should be two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And that's what it says here, but I don't see her check. And that's what it says here, but I don't see her check. Yes, it's 10% of the bid itself, it's $29,000. But there's no check.
There's not likely to be a check, it's just a bond?
For that, but it says the amount of the bond, check or draft.
Right, right, it's probably a bond, so there won't be a check. There should be a document in there that lists it as a bid bond?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But it doesn't, but it says the amount of the bond, check or draft, okay. And which is 5% of the amount of the bid. Okay, so that's not, that's not correct then. Doesn't have the total amount of the project, I... Nope. Doesn't have the amount of the project, but says, 2,900 is the amount, 5% of the amount of the bid itself. And then, but now, it was...
Do you want me to come up and try to fight?
Well, if you can. Because I don't see a check here, and, um...
Right here.
The check. Right, 5%, yeah. Okay, so then the total amount of the project is 6, $59,200. The next one is from... McGuire Iron Head. Now, they do have, they said they have a bid by, amount is 10% of the total. And their... Proposal, um, is for a total of $8, $69,000, $80,000, $15,000. So, that's $80,000, um, $84,000, $80. $84,000, $80, $84,080. So, I'm gonna turn these over to our engineer.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
During our budget meetings, uh, in the budget, uh, 20... No, uh...
There's one second.
If I recall, in the budget, uh, meeting from, uh, 2018, 19, we put, uh, it was estimated $40,000, we put up for a visor. And, uh, it wasn't gonna be in the budget at the time, because it stayed in, in, uh, package. Now, I, I want to know where is that money gonna come from? And since these bids seem to be over $40,000, where are we gonna get the rest of the money? Uh, uh, it wasn't in the budget, and it's clearly stated in there that you're not gonna put it in the budget. So, where is this money gonna come from?
Okay, well, I'm sure that it's part of operational costs. But right now, we're gonna have to find out, first of all, about these bids, to make sure that when Jim brings it back to the board, and then we'll have to, it's gonna be brought back to the board for discussion. And at that time, I'm sure we can, um, discuss that part of the, which are asking for, so, well... I didn't know, I didn't know what the budget is, we're gonna agree, I didn't know how much it costs.
No, it was just, you know, it was saying made in the budget and may not, so we have no idea.
It might be in the budget, I'm, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to actually look at, see, did it say riser?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if it's not, if you said it said riser in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, then it's in there, then...
No, it's not in the budget, it was listed as one of the things that had to be budgeted, and it wasn't, you know, for the budget.
Okay, well, I have to, we have to look at that, and then, we'll bring it to, I'll bring it to the board, too. If it's not in there, it has to be done, then the board has to make a decision whether or not they want to get it done.
And it was only $40,000. I noticed that the bids that, uh, Mr. Sernyak got, uh, all are over $40,000.
But you said it wasn't in the budget, so it doesn't really matter how much it is. So, it is what it is, and if the board wants to move forward to get it done, then we'll have to figure out how we're gonna amend the budget to make it happen. And you'll have to, I mean, if it's, if you're saying it's not in there, so it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how much it costs. Because if you said it's not in there, then it was asked to bring those projections back, because those, that particular thing has to be taken care of at some point, so... And then we'll have to be along with other things, brought back to the board to be amended. To amend the, to amend the budget to, to, um, to accommodate that.
Uh, yeah, I'm, to, so, Mr. Sernyak, that we are, um, I guess, making a bill, and I know this is something we have to be done, because this has been talked about since February, and it seemed like this should have been all set up for the, uh, be put in the budget, but since it's not, I hope you'll take a look at it, because it's something that's mandatory, that we need for the, uh, infrastructure we figure out.
Um, you said that you have something ready for us next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll put this, particularly on the, uh, agenda for committee next week. That's all that I have. I am Lead Village Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna attempt to be sort of quick, even though I have quite a bit that I want to mention. Uh, as you guys know, we are a ticket agent for Pace, and we ordered initially 10 books, uh, uptickets for residents in January, because we were asked to do so. I was informed yesterday that we needed to order 10 additional books, because the sales are going quite briskly. Just as a reminder, as procedure, RTA will deliver the books, and then they will submit an invoice to us for the amount. Um, but the program seems promising, as now individuals are coming in, purchasing multiple sets of tickets at a time. In terms of IAVL, the conference is coming up very soon for the trustees. Uh, your conference packets and per diem checks will be available at the committee of the whole meeting next week, September the 18th. Directions are located inside the packet. You will be signing off, stating receipt of the per diem receipt. Any funds not spent must be returned back to the treasurer, and it has to be in cash. Next, Salt Village will host a Bloom Township Democratic Organizations Monthly Meeting tomorrow in the senior center, tomorrow, September the 12th, at 7:00 PM. We're hoping that many of you will find a way to divide your time before, between rather, CMAP helping us with our vision and our plan, as well as finding out what's happening at the county level and at our, um, township level. If you're interested in filing a property tax appeal, please come to the office of Bloom Township. Uh, there's staff there that's available to help you with your paperwork. You will need to bring your tax bill and a picture ID. The office is located 425 South Hosted in Chicago Heights. If you have questions, you can call 708-754-9400. Salt Village will also co-host a community outreach forum with Commissioner Larry Rogers of the Cook County Board of Review, and that's gonna take place here November the 16th. And you may ask, "What's the difference?", because they're both dealing with tax appeals. Well, the one is in Bloom Township is step one. And if you're not really pleased with what happens in terms of your appeals at the township level, then I would say, come to the Board of Review, which is the next step after you appeal your appeal. And so, they're coming here, so that you can complete all of the documentation, and they'll bring it with them, and they'll help you. And I know for a fact that it's successful, because they definitely helped me last year. Um, the Consoverating Election will take place April, April 2nd, 2019. Petitions can be circulated beginning next Tuesday, September the 18th, and they will be filed with the village clerk if you are a candidate for a trustee, if you are a candidate for the school board member. You will file yours at Cook County Clerk's office, and to be perfectly honest, I'm sorry, I don't know where the library board will file theirs. Uh, but the filing period for all candidates is December the 10th through the 17th, uh, beginning on Friday. I will have a packet for those who are running for trustee in terms of what to submit when you come to file your paperwork in December. And I will have those packets at the front desk, so just simply ask for it. And if there's ever any other questions that you have or need, please don't hesitate to give me a call. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Village Engineer, Mr. Jim Zarni.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, work continues on the 223rd Street Road Reconstruction Project. Concrete work is 90% complete. Contractor has completed some of the existing asphalt service removal. Public Works is continuing their water main repair work in the area. And then, secondly, we will evaluate the bids received today for the Elevator Tank Riser Replacement Project. We will prepare a letter of recommendation for awarding the project. And we would expect the board to consider that at the next board meeting. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance, report to Department of Finances and Administration, and to Director Duesdorff.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to start off just saying that the board has before it, for consideration, a resolution for the village to remove the previous finance director from the village's banking relationships and to add the interim finance direction to those bank relationships. Nothing else is changing. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate, um, Mike Bartnicki on his very well-deserved retirement. He has been extremely, um, helpful during this transition, and I have very much enjoyed working with him. With his retirement, though, we now have two open positions in village hall that we are looking to fill. Um, that completes my report.
Right here. Fire Department?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've asked several times for financial documents, reports. Use the microphone. I've asked several times every week for financial reports that we should be getting in order to do our job with trustees, and we should have some kind of financial information available to us so we can make informed decisions. So, I understand Ms. Sutton has, uh, just started the job, but there are some issues, some reports that she had before that we should be able to get now and on a continuous basis. So, I was hoping that we could get those, uh, reports regularly every month, like we normally do. Uh, some type of aging, you know, stuff like that, I get the tip.
I, yeah, I have that on my desk. I sent you an email yesterday that I have the aging report on my desk, the, um, comparison to budget, um, the water and sewer report, um... Did you not get my email?
I mean, what's, what's the email, you have sent it, so, uh, what is it on your desk for?
Well, I just wanted an oper, an opportunity to explain it to you and make sure that you understood what I was gonna turn over. Because that's new to me. I mean, I have not turned over those reports to you before.
Yeah, just to me, then, I have a question that I'm asking, I appreciate that. Uh, the second thing I want to ask about is that, uh, this has been brought up several times. We still haven't got the legal guidance on operational transfers. I know you, you said you did it, but I, you know, everybody got it, but I haven't seen it. What for operational transfer and how we stand on that. We haven't got any information on Casper, uh, audit, either, that, you know, you said, oh, it's in September, so we're looking forward to that as well. Also, uh, um, for your, uh, for the finance, I don't know, she, she hunk over finance director, but the director, it doesn't have finance in her title. However, I would like to know, what is her title, what is her job description, what is her salary? When is she gonna be appointed? And when is she gonna be approved? Those are things that we need to know. I understand that Ms. Sutton is doing the work, but we need to know what's going on with our finances, so we need to know who's responsible for what, what is her role and responsibility, not only Ms. Sutton, but also the mayor and trustees, because certain things we can't do without some reports. So, we need to know what's going on and how long it's gonna take to, to get things started. So, uh, those are my questions for, maybe, uh, the mayor to ask, so, uh, we, what we really need, uh, reports.
Well, I have the reports that you asked for.
Okay, so, if we can get the rest of that information, I will appreciate it.
Are you sure?
I, I thought she was gonna answer my question.
No. Because she has the answers for you. She told you whatever it is that you need, and she has it on her desk.
She has it.
She needs to, she said she needs to go over it with you. Sending you an email and going back and forth is counterproductive. If you, if you have the questions, if you have a question right there, there it is right there, you can ask that question right there in her office. Instead of, like, if you get, if you get an email, and then you have a question, I'll be going back and forth.
I'm gonna reiterate, I appreciate the reports when you give them to me. But my second part of the question is to find out, what about the job description, the salary, things like that, and everything.
If she is interim, she is interim director. Interim.
I understand what you're saying.
She hasn't been, she hasn't been voted on yet.
I understand that.
Okay, so then, that's why I'm asking you a question.
I ask the questions, asking when is this gonna happen? That's the question.
At this particular point right now, I don't know.
Say it with someone?
I said it last week.
Okay, well, you can say it.
You're doing that.
I know.
Fire Department Chief, um, Fire Department Chief, Captain Dennis Sunwicke, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, over the period from August 24th through September 6th, Fire Department responded to 13 calls. We have four fire alarms, three vehicle accidents, two ambulance assists, and four auto aids to our neighboring communities. I'm the mayor and trustees, uh, two of our firefighters attended classes. Firefighter William Williams recently passed his state DMT certification. Firefighter William Williams recently passed his state DMT certification. Engineer Kevin Luther received his fire service instructor certification. All this schooling was paid for by the FEMA yet, and we received, so it was funded down through good use and no cost to the village. You've already spoken about the corn and dawlers, so that was a success. And our last comment is, as first responders, we will never forget the tragedy that occurred seventeen years ago today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And also, I just wanted to say thank you also for the trailer, the informational trailer that we, uh, we, that we got, um, and it seems like it was a facelift done on it, so just wanted to say kudos to whoever had that done, because this came in one color and now it's a different color, so, and that's a good thing. I just want to say thank you very much.
Assistant Chief Myers.
Assistant Chief Myers, okay. He's not here to say thank you, but I will tell him. I'll see him tomorrow, I think. Police Department Chief Robert Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. The past weeks, we had four hundred and eighty-eight calls from service with eighteen arrests. A case of interest is reported, as I reported on August twenty-eighth at the board meeting, a victim was shot on Sunday, uh, August nineteenth in the sixteen hundred block, two-seventeenth Street. The victim was shot several times and was very uncooperative. Our investigators were very persistent and able to identify an offender. Evidence was presented to the state's attorney's office and the investigators were able to secure an attempted murder arrest warrant for the offender. That offender was then apprehended on September eighth and was now taken into custody. That individual is one of our issues with a lot of our gunshots. Now that the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force has been able to present their investigation to the Cook County State Attorney's Office, and charges on two subjects have been approved, I'd like to report that the South Village Police Department responded to shot fire call on two-seventeenth, Belief Carroll on September ninth. Officers found the victim driver who was in a vehicle had been shot. Two others were also in the vehicle, fled the scene, but later apprehended and taken into custody. The South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force was called out to assist with this investigation. Through the persistence of our police officers, detective insistence of the task force, the information that they gathered was presented to the state's attorney's office today. And again, charges were approved on both subjects, who are now in custody and at Cook County Jail. It should be noted, as was mentioned earlier, that the victim along with the two other subjects who were apprehended were not from South Village. No further information at this time, since it's still an active investigation and we're looking for other people who are involved, and I truly appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. Our next DEA prescription drug drop-off date is Saturday, October twenty-seventh. Containers will be in the police department lobby between seven AM and three PM for your drop-off. Again, we'll be hosting Coffee with the Cop, and I had the pleasure to talk to Mr. Farmer today. We're going to hold the Coffee with the Cop at the senior center between eight AM and ten PM on October third, which is a Wednesday.
Eight AM and ten PM?
Eight AM to, that would be a lot of time to drink coffee. Eight AM to, hold on, let me correct this. Auto correct, it was eight to ten AM. If you guys want to come out at ten, we could be here too. There'd be police officers, there are police officers working at ten o'clock.
Won't be many, no.
Twenty-four seven. Also, lastly, Rail Safety Week, September twenty-third through twenty-ninth is the fifth annual, annual Rail Safety Week. Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, along with the support from state, county, and local law enforcement agencies, along with partnerships from Metro, CN, and United Pacific Railroads, are proud to be part of this national promotion of safety around railroad tracks and trains. For more information about Illinois Rail Safety Week, please be able to visit www.illinoisrail safetyweek.org. Lastly, everyone talks about stray dogs. Marva posted a great picture on the South Village E-News of somebody who turned into stray pit bull. Friendliest dog that you could ever meet, Sergeant Majdak. We took the dog to County Line, so if you're looking for a friendly pit bull, young male, he's at County Line. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Fabrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. In conjunction with the Fire Department report, I'm not going to go into all the calls that we went on to with them. Just, just a note that Thursday, we are having a SMART meeting with our other SMART agencies on the thirteenth, which is Thursday, up in Markham, Illinois, and we are still actively looking for new members to join our department. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll read the, um, no, you don't want. Public Safety, did you want to read that? Did you want to read, um? Yeah.
Certainly.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Director Waller couldn't be here tonight, but I will read his public works report for him. First off, with leaking B-boxes at two-seventeen twenty-four Peterson, nineteen fifty, two-hundred-and-nineteenth Place, seventeen thirty-one, two-hundred-and-twenty-third Place, and one EME dig request for an inside leak at two-hundred, two-sixteen fifty-fifth Clyde, they're shifting back as soon as possible because those are still outstanding. They've had staff working on several emergencies located around the two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street Road Project. The last three items are two storm sewer repairs where they're waiting for parts, and the last valve on Cornell. ComEd has come out with a truck to support the power pole so that they can do their work. They have a small job, their small jobs are being completed here at Village Hall, the police department and the fire department, like the plumbing and the lights, the HVAC and leaks, just to name a few, a few items. The HVAC at Village Hall here is back to full working condition, apparently. Grass cutting continues throughout the village locations. The part-timers are trying to keep up. The rain obviously has caused grass to run amok, so they are a bit behind. September's regular pickup with the branches had to be put out by September ninth for final pickup, and once they have done that pass, they won't be back. The piles that are put out after that will be given tickets, so please, if you have piles out after that, please pull them back out, pull them back and get them off of your park rides. Just as a reminder, they're coming into the rain season soon, so please don't put your debris into the roadways, because obviously that will cover up the storm sewers and cause flooding back up and damage, and it's a waste of taxpayers' monies due to the overtime that is incurred by their staff. And the staff speaking with staff, they're doing their best to assist all the departments set up for events, oil changes, maintenance on equipment, and address all the residents' complaints as much as possible, so please be patient with them as they are behind across the board. And then they are also prepping several concrete jobs and, uh, quarter on moving forward, and that concludes what he had prepared.
I just wanted to make an observation. There was a water main break on around two-hundred-and-twenty-second at Yates today. I was out earlier. I'm sure that they got it under control. I don't know if the water's back on, and I don't know if there was a boil, boil order distributed down that block. If it was, then I'd suggest that you do that, but there was a pretty sized water main break coming out of the driveway of a particular home on two-hundred-and-twenty-second and Yates. So that was earlier today. I haven't had a chance to go back, but I'm pretty sure that it's been, you know, at least addressed and, um, the water should be back on.
I have a question as well, request. Can we, uh, can we report for the fire hydrants and the water main breaks being included? And Kevin's report every month or so, so we don't know since, since that seems to be a hot button, bottom, uh, button act, request.
Wait a minute, you said fire hydrant.
Fire, fire, how many inoffable?
Oh, inoffable.
Water main breaks, uh, she was something else on there. Kevin has a list, so he generally, you know.
Okay, so you're asking how many fire hydrants are inoffable?
Right. Well, he could tell me the status of them.
And you're asking how many water main breaks what happened that week?
Well, uh, I'd like to know how many water main breaks you have for the year.
Every week?
No, just for the year. He generally does it once a month, the report. Those are things that he, he has a report on. He generally has it. No, every month, once a month. You know, when he does his report every month, you know, that'll be in, uh, this is stuff that he reports on.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask you about that. Economic Development Director Joseph Wizwak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Applications for certificates of reoccupancy are required anytime residential property changes tenants or anytime the property changes ownership. This requirement has not changed and remains in effect and we will enforce the code. ZOD's Pizza was approved for their business license, will be opening soon. They'll be located in the old Villa Pizza location on Sauk Trail. Roof and facade work has been underway on the old laundry mat on Sauk Trail. Many people have taken notice of the improvements. We've got a few calls about permits, and yes, they have pulled a permit for that work, so. As the mayor mentioned in his report, the Gas and Watch was issued a permit for mass excavation and foundation work, which has begun at the location. Groundbreaking ceremony will be scheduled this Friday at the location. Invitations have been sent out. Anyone going, I'd suggest wearing comfortable shoes that are going to get dirty. Don't wear heels. They will be removing a lot of the overgrowth and concrete pad that is currently located on the state property at the northwest corner of three ninety-four and Sauk Trail, pending permit from the state. The state will be tearing down the old laundry mat, or excuse me, the old used car lot on the southwest corner of Sauk Trail and three ninety-four the next several weeks. That process will begin. As the mayor also stated, the consultant, TESCA, will be here for our comprehensive plan community meeting at seven PM. All residents are encouraged to attend and give their input. And I would just like to kind of add, you know, this is a community plan for the village, so it's not a Joe Wizewaddy plan, it's not a Derek Burgess plan, it's a South Village plan, so I would ask all residents to attend that meeting and give their input. Also, we will be having a, putting together a request for proposals for the logistics center engineer study that the village received, the Invest and Cook grant for. That'll be coming out soon, and that'll be before the board during the committee of the whole meeting. One final thing that I added is that the contractor that's been doing the lawn cutting will be doing a final cut for all properties, including those that were not identified by the code enforcement department in April, that were not added on the list. These will be included in that, so any properties that got missed will get done one final time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, the, uh, new business opened up in Sugar Shack. It opened up last week, and I understand the first day it opened, it sold out. But I, I was there the other day and, uh, they didn't have any, when they sold out, it was a funnel case and I think some of the hoagies, so they do make hoagies made to order. I didn't get a chance to get into funnel cases, they didn't have any of that, which I already don't need any, but I was trying to sleep and get one. But anyway, they're open there, they're very friendly, and they have an outside, I guess you'd call it garden, that you should utilize before it gets cold out, that you can sit there and eat. It's enclosed, well, it's outside, but it's enclosed in a fence. Food is great. So who said the food is good? The food is great. I don't know if you guys remember, but the guy that's doing the hoagie sandwiches used to be here years ago, located where the Advanced Auto Complex is located. He had one of those restaurants there, and he makes some of the hoagies there, and I have one still there. Okay, reports from trustees, standing committees and comments. Public Service Committee, trustee Bernie Brewer.
Now, before Mr. Mayor, however, I still want to, uh, state again that my administrative code for to get copies is still not working, and I need to get the code.
When did that happen? I need to know, when did that happen? Did that happen today?
It's been more than a month, though.
No, it happened, when you said that time it happened, trustee Ty came in and there was a glitch and we had to call proven. We took care of that, that's why I'm saying, when did that happen?
Well, I was in there, it was Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know about that. I haven't known about, if, if it's not working, then I'll make sure, because when you said that, hey, trustee Ty came in and said the same thing, and there was something with the computer, I guess, with our computer system, and then they had to reset it, and then trustee Ty can say that you got it back to work. I don't know, could you check it before I bring somebody back out? So if you check it, look in the next few days, so we can find out if your code is working. Is that it? Um, Budget and Finance, trustee Robert Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Wednesday, we will have a committee meeting here at seven o'clock. Leave the jury will be in attendance, which will go over the cybersecurity policy that I want to present to the board pretty soon. My next comment is Madam Clerk, excuse me, cybersecurity. Madam Clerk, for next week's agenda, can you add on there the discussion for the civic sort of parade that we talked about about three weeks ago? We need to have another discussion, as trustees didn't have the appropriate materials at the appropriate time. And also, Mr. Mayor, I believe about a month ago, you asked the department heads for some of their needs, a list of their needs, and you got, what's the status on that? Will they be getting that to you soon?
You talking about their wish list and things they need to have done, yes.
Correct.
They're still compiling it. Kevin's not here today. I didn't see him today, but that's something that, yeah, I did ask him about it, and I'm waiting on that to come, and when I do get that, I'll bring that, we have a meeting to bring to the board. We'll see what, you know, because that's one of the things that has to be, the, um, budget has to be amended to, to, to do that, to insert that, so yes. Because these items are not in the budget. So I get that as soon as he gives you the list.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question.
From Mr. Grant.
Yes, trustee Grant, I have a question. Uh, the difference between the one point three million and the eight hundred and eight thousand, I think it is, I don't know, it's like four hundred thousand or something like that. Do we have any kind of documents to show whether the monies were dispersed, used for, you know, four hundred thousand dollars in between? Do we know what happened, you know, what's going on with that money? Or how was it dispersed?
So it wasn't dispersed at all. So eight hundred and eight thousand was for the cash reserve. The balance, let's just say five hundred thousand dollars, that's, is going to be used as for the department to put together a list of things that they need, so out of that five hundred thousand.
Oh, that's what it goes.
That's, that's not all of it, but, you know, it'd be taken into consideration depending on how much they need.
So we'll still have eight hundred and a thousand?
Correct.
Housing and Government Relations, trustee Tate. Orders Review Committee, trustee Limbata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Orders Review Committee will meet on September twenty-fourth at six thirty PM here. We'll be in the conference room B because this, the order is being used. And we're going to go over several of the ordinances that I'm getting back from the attorneys, and then once we approve that, then I'm going to bring it before the board to have them voted on. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Bezalpah.
Thank you, Mayor. We did meet last week, as several of the audience members indicated, they joined us as guests, and we discussed with the chief the fact that he is continuing to work on a presentation for us on community policing. He hopes to have that to me by the end of this week. Once he gets that to me, we will be establishing a date and time for a community forum on that topic. Following that, we will then have another training session for the community on active shooter training. Separate to that, we also did broach the subject of Halloween, since it's never too early to talk about my second favorite holiday of the year, which is trick-or-treating and Halloween. And Mayor, I'll broach the subject with you separately, just to talk about Halloween and trick-or-treating hours before I put it out there publicly, but we did have a conversation about what to do for that, so before I put that out there, I'll just confirm that you're okay with those hours. So before I put that out there, um, I'll just confirm that you're okay with those hours. And, uh, and the last thing that we did discuss, uh, at our meeting was instead of our usual meeting next month on October 3rd, which is the first Wednesday of the month, uh, we're gonna have a field trip next month. We're actually gonna attend night court, um, as a committee. So if anybody cares to join us at night court, it's the first Wednesday of the month over in the big conference room, um, at the police department at seven o'clock, I believe it starts. So, um, we were gonna actually do that as a committee next month instead of having our usual meeting. So feel free to join us at that event instead. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Outreach Trust, trustee Ronald Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've been researching. I've been researching, uh, calling, uh, equipment companies and looking for some type of equipment that we could put into the, uh, community center that would be set, uh, that would be supervised. And as of yet, we have not received any return back from any companies yet, uh, reference, used, used equipment and things like that. School has started back and so our delivery with them is gonna be, well, it's lovely, but I think they're gonna be effective with school. But we would like to have a couple of dances before, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, holiday if we can. And that's my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Reports of committees, the commission's senior advisory council, chairman Emmett Farmer.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees.
Okay, our next, uh, meeting for the senior advisory council is September 13th, uh, with the starting date and all are welcome. Uh, they have just passed off the new calendar for September and they're posted, uh, on the door of the senior center. We have finalized our second trip for the seniors to the Four Winds Casino on Friday, September 28th. And that'll be from eight A M. to three thirty P M. The cost again is thirty-five dollars with a twenty-five dollar credit for the food and gambling. And your money is due by September 18th. And we'd like to, uh, for you all to please encourage all the seniors to come out and join us on our, uh, second trip. Also, the health care for the seniors has been rescheduled from September 27th to October 11th from ten A M. to two P M. Also, we have COME Air and they'll be out at the senior center on Tuesday, September 18th, uh, at ten A M. holding an informational seminar for all households. Free home assessments can be scheduled. The COME Air will provide information on how to save on your electric bill. We do have flyers, we've got some in the back of the room, so if you all need some flyers, please encourage everyone to come out. Also, the seniors are walking every morning, Monday through Friday, in the park behind the village hall. And we'd like you all to come out and join us, it's Friday at, uh, seven A M. and we walk for one hour. And line dancing with Miss Tina, who also does line dancing at the community center. She has joined us over at the senior center too, every Tuesday, uh, for the one in September and except for September 18th when we're having the COME Air come out. But every, uh, other Tuesday and then it's from ten A M. to eleven A M. And she's only paying three dollars for the seniors. So if you're going over to the community center and paying seven dollars, you get a discount. But come to the senior center and join us for line dancing. Also, you've got game night every first and third Friday. Please come out like the seniors, uh, for vigwits and other games. And that's all I have, thank you. Thank you. Okay, new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable on disbursement for September 11th, 2018 in an amount of 357,000, a power of eight thousand and fourteen cents. It was moved by trustee Grant and seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to remove.
You can't make a motion. The motion was before, you can't make a motion while I'm on the floor.
Okay, well. Uh, what's common?
Okay.
The, uh, the, um, I have to go to the office as opposed to reporting to you something?
You can't, okay, brief, I'm saying, you can't make a motion, because the motion is on the floor to accept. If you want something removed, you can ask for the motion to be rescinded, if that's what you wanna do, but you can't make a motion on a motion.
A motion to rescind.
You can ask and have something rescinded.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the, uh, accounts payable portions of the accounts payable for, um, item 11.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying. What's happening with this?
You, you want to make a motion, I can be seeing the motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to accept accounts payable. Now, if you have a comment about something, you can make that comment.
I want to. Well, what I wanna do is approve the accounts payable, but I want a portion of the accounts payable removed. So I want to phrase that motion.
You want to amend?
Yes, okay, I would like to amend, I'd like to present a motion to amend the accounts payable for, uh, what's the date, 9/11/2018. Yeah.
I'm gonna motion.
Oh.
You can't, because we have a motion on the floor already. You have to ask us to amend our motion.
I just.
You wanna know what it's for?
No, I'm, first of all, you, and you, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. You say you want to amend the motion. The only comment the motion is to ask the people that made the motion to rescind their motion. And then you can make a motion to change whatever issue you wanna change. You have to ask two people to ask, that asked to, uh, to make the motion to rescind their motion that they made. They made a motion to accept the, uh, no, she has, she has, they have to, they have to rescind what they, their motion that she wants to like to make a motion. So, I mean, well, that's, 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 that's true too. You have to let, look, what is your, what are you trying to, America?
Well, what, what direction am I giving from?
I'm asking you, what is it, I'm, I'm asking you, what is it that you want to amend?
I wanna amend, uh, a motion, uh, a motion for, uh, new business state at 9/11 and, uh, to, uh, take some things off of the.
Trustee Brewer, what do you wanna take off?
Uh, accounts, uh, some things off accounts payable. Things I wanna take off is I want to delete the, uh, salary for Dr. Strater in an amount of 2,966,000 cents for, uh, building resources and also for 1,700 for, uh, building negotiations. Uh, this stuff has been going on for quite a long time and we have asked and asked for clarification on how many hours she should be, uh, um, paid for. For this pay period along, she has earned 4,466,000, 58 cents. And nobody is really telling us what she's being paid for. Every pay period is a discussion on whether or not she should be paid with 17 hours, 17, point four or five or something. Something needs to be done about that and we need to address that right away. So, uh, this is an ongoing thing and I would like to be, like it to be addressed on, uh, taking this issue off.
So I'll ask, the ones that made the motion, are you willing to rescind your motion and have her make a new motion? Or are you willing to have your motion stay on the board, I mean, on the record and pass that?
Uh, I'll keep my motion on the record.
How many?
Keep my motion on the record. I would like to keep the motion as it is.
Person that seconded, did you want to?
I'm gonna say that A, the 148325 is going along the statement of work of 6,000 dollars a month. The 850 per invoice is for the negotiations, which is separate to that. So no, I am not willing to rescind my second.
Okay, the motion on the floor for the accounts payable in the second. Madam Clerk, could you please call?
I don't know if I should do this now or later, so let me ask you this. I have another, um, motion to, um, amend the accounts payable for 9/11 to include, uh, maybe pay this for, uh, this stuff, Suffin, because we don't know what her salary is, we don't know what her position description is. It has not been approved and yet we're paying her. And I don't think we should pay her unless she's officially one of the people that we're supposed to be approving for paying. So I'd like to have her stop removing that to be revisited and approved accordingly and, and enforcement.
I don't know what that means, but Miss Suffin is an employee. She was put in as interim because the position is vacant. But she was put in by myself as an interim until the board, and then bringing it back to the board to be voted on as full director. But to not pay at this particular point and they, and they were put in, um, that position, I, I really don't understand what that means, that you don't wanna pay somebody for doing what they, that they, they were, they were asked to do. So in that, in that respect, she was, as it states, she's an interim financial director. So she was put in that position because that, that, that position was vacant.
I get it.
It, it existed.
Well, we're doing what we're supposed to do and watching the money and as I was told, we're supposed to. Are you finished? Mister Carter, he was talking while I was saying.
So, I will, I'm trying to go to the second. If I went to 1964, so like there in one, that they worked hours, you have to pay them. If there's a problem with this actual fact, we're after the fact, we have to discuss that. Can't take their money away from them if they work.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but also we have some softest codes that we have to follow. And she's supposed to be, uh, uh, approved by trustees whenever she does the job for us. So since she, uh, we, for some reason, she's not approved, then she shouldn't be paid. And along with Dr. Strater, there's an issue every pay period with her, with her salary. So those things I would love to have, uh, a motion to.
I understand you, it just seemed like it's personal, but.
Uh, there's, you, you, we're talking finance, so don't even put that out there, serious finance.
Every week is.
And that's my job to watch after the money.
You asking for another motion?
I'm gonna put it on record. I know everybody's gonna approve it, but she gotta put it, somebody gotta watch the money.
Okay.
You know.
Any, any other questions in regards to the accounts payable? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer.
Did you say my motion, I think, did you say? I'm telling, shouldn't that be said?
Right, right.
Shouldn't? Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Trustee Brewer.
No, no, sorry, you want to, trustee, oh, sorry.
Trustee Brewer.
Oh, yes.
Your vote was in accounts payable.
Well, I, that's not a term.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
I have a question, I didn't hear what trustee Brewer's vote was. Did you say that?
She said yes.
My vote is yes.
I said yes with exception.
Motion carried.
No, with exceptions.
Thank you, you paid for.
Is yes or no?
I said yes with exception, that's what I said.
Okay.
Item number two. Item B, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the Villas of Sock Village to designate Old Frank Bank, First Midwest Bank, U.S. Bank, Two Funds and Amalgamated Bank as depositories for the Villas of Sock Village.
Some.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Tate. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, the interim said that nothing has changed, that these are our banks. So you have a resolution before us and I see that you have her down as a finance director, which we have not approved her as our finance director, she's the interim. So why is this being brought before us until she's actually appointed?
Okay, she, she is the interim financial director. We have to have her name on their, um, bank in order for us to do business, uh, in order for her to do business with the banks. So as interim, that would be one of the things she has to do, as I stated before, until the board votes to make her, we have to have someone on that account and it, it shouldn't be the finance director.
I see.
But, but it should. Oh, you're saying that it should say interim on here? Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, I will get and make sure that that is put on there and you'll get a copy. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Ty. And trustee Zupan. Yes, trustee Brewer.
No.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion for adjournment. Moved by trustee Tate, seconded by trustee Carter. All in favor?
Aye.